We have a full hats today, except for Dana.
All right, this is the Village of Round Lake Beach Council meeting for June 20th, 22 at 7:00 PM. Clerk, can we get the roll?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Abara?
Here.
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. All right, if the records show a quorum is present, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Approval of the agenda tonight, can I have a motion and a second? Are there any questions on that agenda? So moved by trustee clerk, Nora Cleveland?
Second.
Second by trustee Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Approval of the council meeting minutes for May 16th, 2022 as presented. Can I have a motion and a second? So moved by trustee Stout, a second by trustee Abara, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have that as well. Approval for expenditures of $2,073,051.11. Susan Griffin, do you want to enter finance director?
I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about it. Bruno's broken down the expenditures with the significant expenditures over 100,000. And let me just look here. Don't believe there was anything unusual, the typical ones that we have, the employee healthcare, Lake County Public Works was significant because this was, we paid the money that is due to them for the sewer treatment for the last billing. Amalgamated Bank was the first payments on the 2002 bonds, so the interest on those and Impact Networking.
All right, we did have time and we went over this in the committee of the whole. Does anyone have any questions or anything on the finances? Can I have a motion then, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, motion, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Davis and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, we have no ratifications tonight. Committee of the whole reports, trustees, anyone have anything? There are none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. First up tonight are Round Lake Area Queens with Jill Pocorni.
Good evening, I also have a co-director, Julie Bosco. I am here to introduce our newly crowned 2022 Queens. We've been working with Mayor Nichols on the upcoming Elote Pageant and I have to thank you. You inspired me to grow our program and you gave me the courage to go out to all the other villages and ask them to put in equal matching money and funds for our scholarship program. We truly believe what an impact we're making on this community. Part of our pageant this year, we asked the young ladies what they had learned by participating and their answers varied so much. We spent about a month with the contestants leading up to the pageant. It went from public speaking, we bring in HR specialists to teach them how to interview, how to dress for their interview. We had a yoga instructor come in, teach them breathing techniques to calm themselves. They get up on stage, I'm not a great public speaker, so I'm always so inspired by them being so brave at such young ages. We did add, can you come forward here? A tiny division this year, we figured that earlier we get them onstage. I will say it was very inspiring to sit down and see so many female trustees this evening. That's wonderful and inspiring to them. And then I'll let my partner Julie talk.
Hello.
Hello.
Also, we're very excited this year because this is the end of our first year being an organization that can certify for the President's Volunteer Service Award. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but each of our girls last year earned, well, they put in over 100 hours of service and they earned the gold award, which means they'll be getting a certificate and a letter from President Biden as well as a medallion. So service is one of the core things we really want. Everybody understand how important it is to work in our towns and communities and help out others. So very excited that they all did a great job last year and will continue to do that and recognize the girls. We've also told them that even though they are not current queens, if they continue volunteering, we will continue to help certify the girls so that they will have this information for their resumes and to keep them involved in the communities because that's a big part of what we want to do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and let them introduce themselves. So do you want to start?
Want me to start?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Good evening, I'd first like to thank you all for your support in the Round Lake area as well as for the pageant. As Jill has mentioned, this pageant helps young women build leadership skills, public speaking, interview skills and professionalism. And it's something that's super important to me and I really appreciate your support. My name is Mackenzie Strong and I am Miss Round Lake Area 2022. I am going to be a junior at Illinois College, double majoring in history and secondary education. At my college, I founded a disability advocacy group called VIDA, which stands for Visible and Invisible Disability Advocates. VIDA is my platform this year. So VIDA is what I will be working on. I will be working on spreading disability awareness and educating on different disabilities through many ideas that I've had. The first one is I want to go to schools in our area and read books about disability. So children's books about kids' disabilities, there's a lot out there. Spreading awareness through literacy is so important and it works and it's amazing. And I want to donate some disability books to each school that I go and visit to. So that way the kids have that resource and they can educate themselves. Another way that I'm spreading awareness is handing out these cards that I'll give to you after, perfect. They have a QR code connected and what you will do is take your phone and you're going to scan it with your camera and it'll lead you to a PowerPoint that I made. So this PowerPoint explains who I am, explains what VIDA is. It explains a lot of different resources and things you need to know about being more aware for disabilities, being more of an advocate and just ways to help the movement. At the end is a Google form. You will be asked what you've learned, you'll be asked to ask me a question if you have any questions. You can also leave your email so we can have a conversation. And you can also give me advice on how to push my movement forward. I again would like to thank you so much. I'm super excited for my year as I will be able to meet new people and positively impact the Round Lake area. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'd also like to start with thanking you guys for not only your support throughout the community and town, but also for the pageant. It really helps, like she said, young girls and kind of people like me that want to make an impact. I'm Kayden Zeller, I'm junior Miss Round Lake 2022 and I'm very excited and grateful for this opportunity to not only be up here tonight, but also go throughout the community and help people. My platform this year is mental health and teenagers and how school impacts it. I hopefully plan to host an event that brings the community together through music that shows the struggles and educates people on what's going on and how they can help it and hopefully help people and I hope to connect with the schools as well. And I'm so excited to learn and grow with this program. Thank you.
Thank you. You can hand the mic to her if you'd like. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Leila Rose and I'm seven years old and I go to Martin School. And what I want to change about Round Lake area, we need to pick up the trash that people people throw on the ground, that doesn't save our earth, we need to save our earth or else we can't live in this earth, it would be terrible.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Quinn.
I'm Tiny Miss Round Lake Area 2022.
Hi, my name is Quinn.
I'm Tiny Miss Round Lake Area.
Very good.
2022.
You'll see the biggest growth with her this year, it'll be amazing. In a year when we come back to say farewell, she's going to talk your ear off.
If I may say so, your platforms are excellent. Very, very excellent to hear your advocacy for mental health and youth and also for disabilities as well. Thank you.
Very proud of you all.
You've already impressed us immensely the last few weeks, we're like, wow.
We do want to thank you for helping represent Round Lake Beach and the Round Lake area in general. But we love having you at our events, so I know we'll be seeing you more often now. So thank you, but I would like to come down if I could and give you a check for your scholarship program. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Ladies, you want to come on around if you wouldn't mind?
Really?
You know what, actually if you don't mind, let's go to the podium. How old are you? Seven? You might know my son Nathan Nichols at Martin. Thank you very much, congratulations ladies. No, you're more than welcome.
Thank you, thank you ladies.
Thank you ladies, have a great day.
Congratulations.
All right, next up on our mayor's report tonight is the asking for prior authorization from the board to appoint chief, well, soon to be chief Wayne Wildy on 7/1 of this year. So if I could, I'd just like to have a motion and a second so we can do the swearing in on 7/1. So moved by Marj Cleveland, trustee Cleveland and a second by trustee Stout. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, the motion will carry and we'll look forward to seeing you on the first. Thank you. We also on number three had a planning and zoning commissioner. We're going to pass on this until July and hopefully be able to pass through two new commissioners. So we'll have a full board. We do not have a planning zoning meeting for July, so we'll have plenty of time to get them on board and get them trained so they'll be ready to go for the August hearing. So we will pass that and go on to a clerk's report tonight. We have a clerk's report.
We do not.
No clerk's report tonight, so we'll move on to business item A. A resolution waiving the bidding process and approving agreement with ClearGov Inc. for budgetary and transparency software as a service. Susan Griffin?
Thank you, mayor. At the committee of the whole meeting, we had a presentation, a Zoom presentation on the software. I sent out to all of the board members a copy of the slides. I hope you got a chance to look at them. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about this software. But I think it will really enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of our budget processing and our budget document as well as the transparency of information, budget to actual, updates on where the capital projects are, with a lot more maps and images and things to enhance the data.
All right, thank you. As we said, I know we discussed it in committee of whole. So if we could have a motion and a second for a resolution waiving the bidding process for this agreement with ClearGov Inc. for budgeting and transparency software.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Davis, second by trustee Valdez and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
All right, and if you could, I'm going to back up for just one second because I know the most of the board here knows it, but the public may not. The swearing in, the swearing in will be next month to, at the board meeting for the actual ceremonial swearing in for Deputy Chief Wildy being sworn in as the chief. And then we will also be saying our goodbyes to the chief officially at that meeting. And that meeting will be at the Cultural Civic Center, 7:00 PM on the third Monday of July. All right, we will go back then to business item B. A resolution approving the Second Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Round Lake Heights regarding water transmission. I know that this is a cleanup, but I'll let Director, Director Hill, Scott Puma, our village attorney, just briefly mention it.
So the village has a long-term water transfer agreement with Round Lake Heights and this going back many, many years. And Round Lake Heights was required to post a bond, they've always paid it, it's an additional cost to them. We have other contractual rights and the Heights asked that the village agree to remove the bond requirement. It really hasn't ever come into play to draw on it and it is unlikely that it will. So the ask from them, from Round Lake Heights is to remove that. Other cleanup item is to change the notice to Mayor Nichols. You have to do it by, there's a formal requirement to change notice and it just made sense to throw that in for this one too, so.
Thank you. And the amount too of the bond was so insignificant compared to what they actually use on a monthly basis. So it didn't seem to make sense considering there was a cost to hold that bond. So moving on, can I have a motion and a second for the resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement, the Village of Round Lake Heights? So moved by trustee Husk, a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to item C. An ordinance amending the village code and establishing a hotel tax. Attorney Puma?
So the village as a home rural municipality has the ability to establish a hotel tax irrespective of the statute that allows for it. And the village, the draft ordinance before you calls for a 6% hotel tax as a new revenue source for the village as part of, and there are efforts ongoing, I think as everyone knows, to attract hotels to the village. So this puts us in place for this at the 6% tax.
All right, are there any questions at all on this? I know we've never had a hotel and didn't anticipate it at first, but the need for it has arisen, it seems to be. And we do have interests, so we wanted to make sure we had an ordinance on the books. So if I could, a motion and a second for establishing the hotel tax. So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Davis, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, a motion will carry. Item D tonight, an ordinance approving intergovernmental agreement for the collaborative use of the Lake County ETSB CAD and mobile systems. Chief Rivera?
As we discussed in the committee of the whole, as we push towards a consolidated dispatch center in the entire county, this is just another step that we need to keep up with the rest of the departments and the county as well so that we can eventually merge as well. So this is basically continuing our agreement for the use of the new CAD program as well as a record management software that goes along with it. That cost won't begin until the next budget year. So the police department will have to budget for this in the next cycle this fall to be approved next year.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions or concerns? I know we did discuss this in the committee of the whole, so if I could, a motion and a second. So moved by trustee Valdez? Second by trustee Cleveland, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item E, a resolution approving the purchase of police body worn cameras, related hardware and unlimited cloud-based storage. Cloud-based storage being the primary, I guess.
That is our, that is our big winner in this one. So we've already had our body worn cameras for a couple of years and we've gotten to the point where we need to get new ones. And in quoting out new ones and other vendors, we found that our current company, WatchGuard, which is now owned by Motorola, has the best options in quote out there. But in addition to not just having the best option in quote and price wise for the cameras and it is something that we're used to using with our squad cameras, they also allow for unlimited cloud-based storage, which is what causes a department of our size and busyness the most difficulty. So this actually works very well for us for an IT solution for our storage issues that we have being so busy. So this takes care of everything, so we are recommending this. We were due to buy, I believe we were due to purchase about $21,000 roughly approximately for this year. This one will push us to $28,000 the first year. But this is what we're requesting. This is going to put us, again, in the long term is going to save us money with storage.
And the purchase, the original purchase was, we were going to have a $21,000 expenses here, but that was without the storage, so.
That was not taken, correct mayor, that was not taken into account the storages, the struggles we have with storage. Body cam footage is extremely a large file and a department of our size and busyness, I mean 30,000 incidences a year, even though not all of them draw paper reports, does take up a lot of footage. And our net, we would have to buy a new server to keep up with that. So we were working with our IT provider with Impact to try and come up with a solution and this is actually our best solution.
All right, thank you. I know we did all discuss this, I know a few of us weren't available, but if we could then, if everyone's in agreement and understands this at this point, we'll have a motion and a second for the resolution approving the purchase of the police body cameras and related hardware with the unlimited cloud-based storage. So moved by trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Second by trustee Stout and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, item F is a resolution approving proposals from McNeely Services Incorporated for work at the police department and public works facility relative to the village's asset replacement program. Over time and as this is considered called, the asset replacement program, there are items that need to be taken care of on a yearly basis. This is an item that's been up for quite a long time and is in need of repairs at both the public work facility and the police department. Do you have the, because I didn't scan to it, the amount, I'm sorry.
The police department amount is $56,310.25 and then the work at the Polk Works Garage for the new gutters and downspouts is $8,062.50.
All right, thank you very much, Scott. Can I have a motion and a second on the resolution approving the proposal for McNeely Services? So moved by, who was, trustee Davis? Trustee Davis, second by trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item G, a resolution authorizing the waiving of competitive bids for approving an award of contract for a video system at the Round Lake Beach Cultural Civic Center. This will be expenditure with ARPA funds, I believe. And that total amount on this will be forty? Forty-three thousand, six forty-eight. Can I have a motion and a second? Okay, trustee Abara?
Second.
A second by trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. A resolution authorizing and waiving competitive bids also for approving an award of contract for audio visual system upgrades at the Round Lake Village Beach Village Hall. This is for the room we're in, some of the technology needs upgraded to a digital status. Total amount being on this one? Fifty-three thousand?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred plus a 10% contingency in case there's anything over.
All right, thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved?
So moved by trustee Husk, a second.
Second.
By trustee Davis, all in favor with a roll call vote, please, I'm sorry.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Ayes have that and a motion will carry. And item I, a resolution approving proposal for public work supplies and services. Scott Puma?
Every year, the village's public work staff uses a variety of equipment and materials in order to fix the various parts of the streets, water and sewer, water and sewer prevention and the HVAC. So we're looking at approving here a couple, two vendors to work on water and sewer distribution system issues, Mid-America Water and Sewer and Corn Main. Then we're looking for certain materials that the village would need and we're looking at Peter Baker and Sons here, Thiel and Sand and Gravel. Then for building repairs and HVAC upgrades, we're looking at Robinson Heating and Cooling, who has done a lot of work here in the past, and Northern Weathermakers, who I believe also have. Then the village's streetlights also need to be maintained and we're looking at Hometown Electric for that. And then equipment repairs, we're looking at Burris Equipment. And the allocation for all of these would be not to exceed, I believe, $25,000 for each.
And this is also all items that have been budgeted as well. This is just for an authorization so they don't have to come to the board every time there's an expenditure of over $10,000, which some of these items, of course, could exceed that amount and rather than having to wait for the following board meeting, since it is a budgeted item and they are using approved vendors, we will allow them to go up to the $25,000 without our immediate knowledge. Can I have a motion, please? So moved by trustee Cleveland, a second, please. So moved by Trustee Cleveland, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Ayes have that, and the motion will carry. Item J, a resolution authorizing waiving bids for approval on award of contract to ILM for aquatic weed control at Hook Lake. This was for, as it stated, an aquatic weed control. And the total amount being, on this one, is $11,000, I believe.
$706.
All right, $11,706. And they have done the treatment, and it is starting to take effect. You'll notice a lot of dead floating weeds and materials. It is starting to clear it up nicely. If I could, a motion and a second. All right, a motion by Trustee Abara, a second by Trustee Davis, I'm sorry, Valdez, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
All right, the Ayes have that as well. The motion will carry. Item K, an ordinance rezoning certain property, granting a special use permit with certain variances and departures regarding the property at 911 Lotus Drive. Chief, you want to take this, or you want Scott to, or?
It's pretty basic. Basically, the Board has already authorized rezoning for this property, and what's left in that process is the map amendment. So that's the final process of this, is actually authorizing and the ordinance for the map amendments, we can get that taken care of. So it was already approved for the rezoning. We are just now completing the process.
Perfect. Can I have a motion and a second for the granting the special use permit for, and with variances at 911 Lotus Drive? So moved by Trustee Stout.
Second.
Second by Trustee Cleveland. A roll call vote.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, I believe this is more of the same, but just that are different property here. Item L on the business tonight, an ordinance rezoning the property at 1937 North Municipal Way, 1947 North Municipal Way, and 2007 North Civic Center Way, and 680 East Mallard Creek Drive, and certain other properties to M1 Municipal Zoning District. Chief?
You're correct, Mayor. This is the exact same thing. We had these properties rezoned. The Board has already authorized it, and this is just creating the map amendment that's required to complete the process.
All right, can we have a motion and a second, please? So moved, motion by Trustee Cleveland. Second by Trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout? Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Ayes have that. The motion will carry. Item M on business tonight, an ordinance approving a special use permit for an automotive filling station and a non-exclusive license agreement for the property at 221 West Rollins Road.
So on this one right here, the filling station is going through new ownership. So the new owner came in to follow the special use permit process. It was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission for that. In addition, they did recommend for the Board to consider attaching the special use to the property, not to the actual owner of the property, as these properties do change from time to time, and they continue to be used the exact same way. It makes things a lot easier to just keep the licensing specific to, or the special use specific to the property, and not to the actual owner. So in the future, if this changes hands, the new owner does not have to come through the special use permit process, unless there is a desire to change the use, then they would have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission. But that is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Board.
The only thing is, this is a little bit different. I don't think they were aware that there's also a license agreement for the alley that's there between the fire station and that sitco station. There's actually an alley that has, is used for transportation. There's a fence on it that is the property owner's, and then there's a garbage dumpster enclosure. So that.
The special use is related to that?
Well, there's a license agreement, because it's your, it's the village's alley, and they're tied together. So the current property owner has a license agreement for that, and it expires upon them selling the property. It's non-transferable, so that the village always has a license agreement with the property owner. So I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission was aware that the license was outstanding. And so it would be easier, in this instance, actually, in case the property does change hands, that they have to come back, and the new property owner would have to enter into a new license agreement, so we don't lose track of that. So that was, so I guess my recommendation would be to have it tie, continue to just go to the special use to the owner, so you make sure that you're tied with insurance and you're protected on that license agreement. Otherwise, at some point, you could get an adverse possession claim, and you have a lot of infrastructure underneath that property, is my understanding.
So that was something we were unaware of.
That is something we were unaware of, but again, it was just a recommendation from Planning and Zoning. They did recommend the special use permit for the new owner.
Yep.
Absolutely. It just was, this license agreement is out of the ordinary in that area. We vacated some of the easements over there, if you recall, for the, for the car wash and somebody else in that area. I can't remember who.
So we are complete with what we're doing here on this one. We just need to not follow the suggestion on that portion of it.
Correct. That, it just would be, this is one that you want to keep track of, because you have the fire station right there, too. And at some point, they may want more property if fire vehicles change, so you want to be in control of this.
All right.
So that's something that I just don't think they were aware of.
So we will take care of that, but it doesn't, the vote from Planning and Zoning is still standing. This is something that can go through for the special use permit. It would just have to be filed, again, on this one. But it is something on their suggestion is a good idea to not have to do that for every.
I think that's something that we should talk about further.
Okay. So if we could, a motion and a second approving the special use permit for the automotive filling station and license agreement. Yes? The Planning and Zoning just more or less said, hey, let's not tie the special use to the owner, but yet to the property. But in this situation, because the fact that there's a licensing agreement for use of the property in the back, which is ours, they just don't want to, they don't want to follow their exclusion.
Yeah, that's my recommendation, is to make, you always want to have that license agreement with the correct owner, so you don't lose track of it, in this instance. Because this is out of the ordinary, that you actually have a license agreement in the first place. You haven't done that a lot.
Thank you. So if I could, a motion and a second, please. So moved by Trustee Davis. Second by Valdez, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
All right, the Ayes have that. The motion will carry. Item N, tonight, an ordinance rezoning certain property with certain variances and departures regarding 403 through 409 East Rollins Road, 1614 North Channel Drive, and 1629 June Way Terrace. Which one? West Rollins Road?
Yeah, it's West Rollins Road.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it, I think the W got dropped.
409 West Rollins Road and the others. Chief?
I apologize on this one, Mayor. This is not one that was brought forward to me before. And it was, I did not see it, so if.
I believe he's perfect.
This one goes all the way back to September, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that's why soon-to-be former Chief Rivera isn't that familiar with it. So the Planning Department was actually waiting for more material. This kind of all caught us by surprise, because Kate Portia had left, and we're trying to figure out where this was and what, and catch up to what happened. The property owner was supposed to submit some additional documentation, which has since come in. It's been reviewed, and it's been deemed accessible, or acceptable, not accessible, acceptable. And it involves some things that the Fire District was looking for, and also consolidating the plots. It's going to rezone one lot, and then bring all the lots into a commercial subdivision for a strip center ultimately. The Plan Consultant Memorandum refers to like a special use plan development. You really don't need to do that in this situation, and that wasn't exactly what was applied for. So we're really just consolidating these lots into unified use, so that you can, so that the property owner can build a new strip mall in that area.
All right. Then if we can, a motion and a second for the ordinance rezoning the properties at 409 West Rollins Road, 1614 North Channel Drive, and 1629 June Way Terrace. That'll all be rezoned into one?
Yeah, actually, all but June Way, I believe, are already C3. It brings the, no, the North Channel property, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. It's the 1614 North Channel into the same zoning. So there's a few variations for size relative to existing conditions, but there's only one rezoning. The rest is bringing it all in. This, it seems a lot more complicated than it really should be.
And actually, I guess if we saw the map, too, it'd be easier for everyone to understand that these are all touching properties, and they're all off of that 409 West Rollins Road connecting. And that way, they can do the one large strip mall there. If we could, then, a motion and a second. This has been through the Planning and Zoning and was referred back to us. So moved by Trustee Abara.
Second.
Second by Trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland? Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the Ayes have that, and the motion will carry. We are now at the end of our meeting, and we are open to public participation. Does anyone in the public have any questions or comments for the Board? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, followed by your questions or comments. Hearing none? Nothing to say tonight, George? All right. Thank you for coming, and we do not have executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, or executive session minutes and personnel. So if we could, I have a motion for adjournment. So moved by Trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Trustee Stout, and a all in favor. Ayes have it. Adjournment time, 7:42. Thank you all for coming tonight.